Good evening, everyone. This is the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting of Monday, April 19th, 2021. Tonight, primarily, we will be hearing presentations from a number of general government departments. This is for anybody that is an attendee listening in on the call. This will not be the evening where we make any decisions as a Board of Finance. That will happen on Wednesday, April 21st, when we begin deliberations. So, thank you for joining us. But again, this will be for presentation purposes only of the remaining departments that we have to discuss for the town side of the budget as well as capital. So with that, we will get started right away with new business budget reviews, beginning with Department 418, the Commission on Aging. And I see that we have Kathy Wilson with us this evening, who can quickly walk us through her budget. If there's any highlights that you would like to point out or anything that you would like to explain, feel free to do so.
So I think the biggest jump on my budget is line item 311, where it looks like I have a 13% increase. And I just wanted to remind the board of what has happened. Back in October of 2019, my program coordinator left Eastline to go to a job at the East Hartford Senior Center. That fall, we advertised a position, didn't end up making an offer to anybody. Put the ad back out in February or so, got more applicants in. But at that time, we started seeing that maybe we shouldn't make a move at this point because we were just on the beginning of COVID. So COVID hit. We ended up not doing anything, contacted everybody, said we're not hiring at this time. Come the summer, so August of 2020, is when I contacted all the people that had previously applied or previously sent their resumes in in February, found out what their interest still was, and then went through the interview process and finally hired somebody in October of 2020. So it looks like a big jump, but it's what had happened was the position for the 1920 fiscal year was fully funded, but we didn't expend a lot of it because we didn't have anybody after October. Then for 2021, we didn't fully fund it because we weren't going to hire somebody as of July 1st. We postponed it until September. And then now we're fully funding it for the entire fiscal year. So that's why that that line item looks like like I'm potentially hiring an additional person, and that's not what's happening. So that's really the only big... Oh, I'm sorry, Camille.
Yeah, that that really is the only line item that shows a significant jump. And we do remember very well of the three-month salary that was reduced from your department because that position was not going to be filled for three months. And if I'm correct, I believe that amount was $13,445. So this increase from 122 to 135 basically reinstates that three months' worth of salary to make that position whole for the budget year. And then it looks like the Board of Selectmen added on to what you requested just a general wage increase, a GW 2.25%, just like everybody else is getting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Do any members have any further questions or comments or concerns for Kathy Wilson? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll be moving on. Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you, guys. All right, have a good evening, everyone.
You're welcome. Good night.
We're excited, yeah.
I'm leaving right now.
All right. On that happy note, we'll move on to Department 419, Health and Welfare.
Anna, do you want to talk about the increase on this? Is this a per capita increase or did they change their rates?
They changed their rates slightly. They hadn't increased their rates in several years and due to the cost of business, had to do it for the upcoming fiscal year. So there's a small increase in this budget. So this is for the Shoreline VNA services that we use. And they go, they do several clinics in the town for us as well as in-home visits for those that can't get out. And then they bill us, they send us a statement every month on how many hours have been incurred, and then, once a quarter, they bill us.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Does anybody have any questions on Department 419?
Yeah, I don't want to spend a lot of time. I'm just trying to understand how it works. When the VNA does an in-home visit, they bill the town? They don't bill the insurance company?
So there are services, so these are services, the in-home visits that they're doing, that they're billing us for, are like the share that that we we have to pay for for the residents that are using the services. They also do go to insurance providers for a portion of the fees, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, we'll move on to Department 420, which is the library. I see Lisa Timothy is online with us.
Yep. Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. We are carrying a lot of money forward this year. So as you can see, we're able to give $20,000 back off of last year's and still get by next year comfortably. So that's we've we've put down our best guess now for where we're going.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions on the detail that was provided to us?
It's a good year to do that, Lisa. You guys trimmed way back when everything was shutting down. Of course, you were sick and out and obviously, and you were, you're a good leader because you had a good deputy. And Tara.
Tara's done an amazing job.
And you have an amazing board as well. So we're glad to see that you're coming back slowly. And, you know, our prayers were answered on that. And Tara, you did a marvelous job. And, you know, to be able to forcefully cut back and be able to deliver a smaller budget this year, it's helpful and we're grateful for it.
We can, we can give back. We certainly are quite willing to do that. And I agree with you, Tara did an amazing job. And a lot of the credit goes to her. She steered the ship this year.
Very good. Any, any questions for either Lisa or Tara or the First Selectmen? Okay. I mean, thank you very much. It's good to see you again. And we look forward to seeing you.
It's good to see you.
Thanks.
I'll be back the end of this week, probably at least part-time.
Great, I'll come see you.
Terrific, terrific.
All right, Friday, Thursday, Friday.
Take care, we'll see you soon then.
Okay, yep.
Camille, if you could let Tom Beebe in. He's the Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Oh, I did not know.
And Mary Smith is one of our registrars, of course. So I think you can bring her over now or when it's time. There we go.
Hey, welcome, Tom.
You're muted, Tom, so I know you like to talk, but you've got to understand how the mute button works. And it's star six on your phone or maybe you have a button to hit. There you go.
There you go.
Hi, buddy, how are you?
Good, good. Thanks for letting me in, appreciate it.
Yeah. Dave, Dave or Tom, who's starting here?
Well, I'm going to start. And we just want to introduce Tom as our new chairman. He started in January of this year, and we're off and running. As far as our budget is concerned, we have a retirement coming up. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Carol Roster, our program coordinator, will be retiring as of June 30th. Carol has been with the Park and Rec Department in some form or fashion for 49 years and 29 years as our program coordinator. So we're going to miss her and wish her the best of luck. But she is retiring as of June 30th of this year. One of the things that I'm highlighting is I'm requesting reinstatement of a full-time maintainer. Presently, I have three. And in my budget, I am requesting it to go to four as of January 1st of 2022. I had sent Anna some information earlier today, and I think she forwarded it on to you guys regarding our, exactly what we do as far as maintenance is concerned. And our responsibilities keep growing, and we need to staff it appropriately. And so the demands have gotten greater for us. And so that's what I'm looking to do. Our overall budget, because of the retirement with Carol, is at 0.9% decrease overall. So because of that retirement, we're able to save quite a bit of money in having hiring someone in at a entry-level position. So we are in that process right now. Applications were due into our office April 16th, and we are going to interview next Tuesday with and move forward with the hiring of that position for that position to start here at the beginning of the fiscal year. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me at all regarding our operating budget. Just know that our programming is starting to get back up around this time last year. We were trying to figure out ways of canceling programs and doing it safely and that kind of thing. And it's neat, this year, we're actually looking to ramp up our programming. And so most programs have been reinstated. However, we are at, some of them are at capacity with half the class, like our indoor exercise programs, the half of what they were. But we hope to be able to change that here in the near future. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on our, my operating budget or anything?
Yes, John.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, John, how are you?
A couple of questions. One, baseball field, what's the status of that?
I have nothing to do, the high school baseball field?
Yeah, you have nothing to do.
I have no jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
I couldn't answer, John, I don't know.
All right, forget that one then.
Okay.
Number two, could you explain the difference of the two revenue funds? Where they go, how they affect your budget? The Beach Enterprise Fund and the Special Revenue Fund?
Yep, so the Special Revenue Fund has been, we started that in 2010. It's where all of our program expenses and revenue go into. And it's a revolving account. So from year to year, it's revolved since 2010. So that's everything, includes aerobics for the income for that and then expenditures that go out. Our biggest program is our playground program, obviously, which we did not do last summer. But typically, that's around a $100,000 program where we're taking that in and paying that back out. So that's the Special Revenue Fund that handles all of our programming. Our Beach Enterprise Fund was set up two years ago, and that handles all of the revenue and all of the expenses that are related to beaches only. So that's lifeguards, gate attendants, equipment for the lifeguards, toilet paper for the restrooms, that kind of stuff. And so that was done, I think, March, two years ago. This will be our third summer coming up. The Beach Enterprise Fund, in the first year, we did very well. I think we had a surplus of about $12,000 with the Enterprise Fund for the beach. And it was probably a good thing that we did very well because last summer, in that fund, we lost $40,000 something thousand because of COVID and because of capacity limits. So we had a buffer there. Plus, if we remember, because the state had used Cheney Park as a lay-down area, it impacted some of our parking and stuff. Couple of years ago, they've given us $50,000 to be able to use that. And that went into that special revenue, not the special revenue, the Beach Enterprise Fund. And so we're still in a good position as far as the beach is concerned, even with losing almost four, a little over $40,000 last year in the Beach Enterprise Fund.
So the Beach Enterprise Fund takes care of all expenses for the beach?
That is correct.
And the Special Revenue Fund is on the other side of the ledger as far as all your other expenses?
Program, not, because I still have the operating, just programming.
Just the programs, okay.
Programs, right, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Sam.
So, quick question, Dave. So did you lose a lot of money this year on the Special Revenue Funds for the programs?
We did not because it's a revolving account. So if we didn't run the program, then we didn't have any expenses to go out. So like Playground is showing a deficit right now because we play catch-up every year. Because the way the program is set up is we take all the revenue in before July 1st, and the expenses go out after July 1st because of the way we take registrations, just the way that falls. So some of those losses we had from the year before, we expect to make up this spring. So but like most of our aerobics programs, any of those other things, because they are on a break-even basis, if we didn't run it, we weren't having any expenses. So we were, we're still in pretty good shape as far as that is concerned.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi. Yeah. Hi, Dave. I just had a question about contracted for services. Little bit of an increase with equipment and park and field maintenance. So could you elaborate a little?
Sure, so on our, like on our athletic fields, we do, we will contract out some services. And most of them we do in-house, but some that we do are like a deep-time aeration, which is a piece of equipment that we don't have. It is good for the turf, you know, healthy for the turf, and we do that for that contract service. You know, everything's going up. So our anticipation is that we'll pay a little extra for that. And then so also in park and field are some of our other things that are not in there, that are not beach-related. So at McCook, we have, no, excuse me, at Bribrook, we'll have paper goods, electricity, some of that other stuff that comes out of that park and field account. So our normal operations kind of thing, it's not a beach-related.
Okay, great, thanks, thank you.
Any further questions from the Board on Parks and Rec? Dave, I think you have some capital items to discuss.
Yes, I have one, yeah, great. So I have one in this year's, I think it's a replacement of a 2007 pickup truck with a new pickup truck that'll have a plow package and a lift gate. That is the only thing for, in this year's request for capital improvement. Again, it's to replace a 2007 pickup. It's in the vehicle, and it'll be in the vehicle acquisition plan.
That is for $50,194?
What I think, Anna, I think, yeah, is that the price for, that includes the acquisition? I think I had it budgeted for 60. I think it's spread out for four years, right?
Yeah, it's in the capital improvement plan for $60,000.
So do we get some estimates on that to make that number come down in the actual Capital Department 724?
We haven't gone that far yet, as far as that is concerned. That is based on information regard from previous years on the purchase of it. So I don't have, and that's really handled through, through the Public Works, through their vehicle acquisition. I just put it in my budget because it's a park and rec-related vehicle.
Yeah, so Camille, if I may?
Yes, please.
Okay, so in the Capital Department budget, which is 724, it shows for all of the existing acquisition payments that we're currently making for the Parks and Rec Department, they total the $37,429. And then the estimated acquisition payment for the purchase of the $60,000.
Hang on just a second, we're $37,429? Where is that?
So if you look on, in Department 724, the spreadsheet, and see over in the right-hand column, you know, off to the right, it shows $37,429 existing and $12,765 for the 2122 plan for a total of $50,194.
Okay, so this is the backup that for the operating budget.
Oh, you know what, Camille? When you were just talking, we couldn't hear what you were saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I see on this spreadsheet that you included in Department 724, a line item that is Town PNR Acquisition Program, so $50,194.
Right, so if you look all the way over to the right of that, you should see where it says $37,429 existing and $12,765 for 2122, total being $50,194. So I just kind of wanted to itemize for the board to show you what, you know, prior obligations were and what was going to be added, you know, what we're estimating will be added as a result of the, of the new acquisition in the upcoming fiscal year.
Right, now I'm following. So you're saying that for 21/22, you're adding $12,765 as a result of a $60,000 acquisition for a truck?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. I just, I needed to connect the dots here. Thank you. Any, any questions on this capital item in Parks and Rec? Any questions for Dave? Okay, seeing none, I think we can wrap this department up. Thank you, Dave. Welcome, Tom, nice, nice to meet you.
Thank you, thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Take care.
Thank you.
Good job, Tom.
With that, we are going to move on to Department 110, which is the Registrar's Office. I see we have both Wendy Sims and Mary Smith on board with us this evening. Would you like to, to walk us through your budget? Or would you just like to open it up to questions? How would you like to proceed?
Um, I think I'll kind of open it, I'll walk you guys through it a bit. Mary can fill in the blanks as necessary, I'm sure there will be some. So we had requested for salary for registrar $60,000, which the Board of Selectmen proposed $57,377. So we're asking for that to be reinstated, which would bump our total budget. I'm sorry? Okay, sorry. Under our operating expenses, that stays the same. From, that would stay the same, so that would be a total of $7,200. Our election day expenses were reduced to $25,000. We should be able to do that. We'll just have a municipal election this year. It's a little, we don't have to hire as many people. We'll only have one, hopefully, one referendum next May. We don't plan on having any primaries for the municipals. So going from the $25,000 we spent in 2021 to cutting it $7,000, cutting it to $7,000 is fine. So that would significantly, that significantly reduces our budget. So the Board of Selectmen, the proposed budget came out to $99,077. What we would like, that is a cut of over $28,000 from the previous year. All we're asking is to kind of reduce the cut to a total of $25,105. So our total budget for this year would be $101,709. I included, I sent it to Camille, the kind of a breakdown of our yearly responsibilities. We actually show up more than twice a year to run elections. We work year-round. Our current voter registration is almost getting close to $14,000 in the town of Eastline, so there are more responsibilities. We just finished our canvas, which took us a lot more than the recommended 25 hours and cost us a lot more in postage this year. It'll, those costs will continue to rise in the time required for us to maintain the voter registration list and canvas and everything. The demands keep increasing. So that's why we asked for a little bit of a raise. I know we get the 2.25% cost of living raised, even though inflation is now at 2.5%. Mary, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you pretty much have a lot of it. I know that we will be looking for more to cover our annual canvas. That has actually gone up by over 500 voters due to the new list that the state has sent out, which now we have to canvas every voter that hasn't voted in four years on our list. So that started with, it was 500 and change this year. Each letter that goes out is 51 cents. We have to put a pre-stamped envelope in there to the tune of 51 cents. And if it goes on the NCOA and goes through the post office, we have to pay another 63 cents for a postcard back. So that's $1.65 per envelope that we send out for a voter canvas. So just right there, with that extra 500 or so, we're going to be $800 short on our canvas, our costs and supplies. This year, we'll be able to cover it because we did have some election money left over from grants and such. But I, that kind of bothers me as, that just came in, and I can't really give you a total figure of what we're going to need for next year. But I would say it's probably going to go up by $1,000. Well, let's say 700 for the postage. Our postage is an annual postage allotment. But most of it, when I go in, I have to do what's a pickup of the returned mail or the postage due. And I'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. And I pay that, and then the town reimburses me. And that averages around $500 or $600 on that, too.
So Wendy, I apologize, I did receive some emails from you this afternoon. I did not have a chance to open them up and circulate them to our board members. I will make sure that I'll follow up and do that. And whatever is in there, I'll make sure gets included in the meeting minutes of tonight's meeting. So getting back to the request that you had for a raise, if I'm understanding this correctly, both of you registrar, registrars are salaried employees, correct?
Correct.
Non-union?
No, no.
Non-union or union?
Non-union, Camille.
Non-union. And so what I'm understanding is that it's not so much that you're asking for a raise, you're just asking to be paid fairly. You're asking to be compensated fairly for the additional hours that you two are working as a result of the additional voter registration, the turnout, the requirements. So you, how many hours are you currently working, each of you?
We're scheduled for 12 hours a week, but we say, you know, it's 15, so it's an extra three. And I believe, I don't have the information in front of me. We've gotten the cost of living raised every year. But I want to say, was it 2007 was the last time? Oh, there was a $500 raise in 2012. And then before that, it was 2007, before there was any, you know, you know, we don't get longevity, we don't get any of that. So, you know, it's hard, I know we're all struggling, but it's hard to say, you know, we think we deserve more, but we don't.
Well, I appreciate your addressing the Board of Finance. And we will take that under consideration during. And we will take that under consideration during deliberations on Wednesday, if we get to it at that point in time. Is there any other board member that has a question for either Wendy or Mary? Yes, John?
I just have a comment. Having seen what they, these two do last year, not counting the preparation they, they have to go through, up to a primary referendum. Primary day of referendum day, they, they're up like at four or five o'clock in the morning and they don't get out of there till like 10 o'clock at night. So I think whatever percentage raise that they're asking for is well deserved because of all the hours they put in, whether it's on the clock or not. So just seeing this first time, first time, firsthand last year, I think the, it's well deserved. Wendy and Mary.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
We, we do appreciate, we do appreciate what you guys do at the polls, for sure. We know that that's over and beyond what, you know, your job description really calls for. Anne Chikello, did you have a question?
I do. So, um, Mary, I was wondering, you were talking about the mailing. Is there any way you can do any kind of, I don't know where you are, somewhere.
I don't have a face. It doesn't look like.
Oh, okay. That's what I was looking for. I'm looking for a person. Is there any way you can, you know, get a better deal on using bulk mailing?
That is through the town. That's through the, um, you know, the Pitney Bowls at the town. We're using the machine. And then that comes out of our budget. So that, I'm assuming what we pay per envelope is, you know, probably the best you're going to get anywhere. I, I'm not that, that good on that.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
And then the other rate, the 63 is 69, um, that's set by the post office. That's a, an actual like three by five card or five by seven card that comes back. It's an actual scan of the envelope that we send out. And then there's a, a computer-driven ad, address correction on that.
Thank you.
So they, yeah, that's what they, they charge us.
And you're required to send, um, a canvas letter out to all, was it new voters or voters who?
No, no, we, we get what's called, um, the Rowback, which is the Connecticut Registry, Registraz. We send in for a canvas list. And that's compiled from the National Change of Address Database from the post office. And if people say in town, you live at, you know, here I'm at Eight Moss Way Road. Okay, but now I decided, you know, it's better for me to get a post office box. So I go down and the Flanders Post Office, I say, I want a box. They give me the box. Then the town is, we are notified through this list that now I have box number 178. And so we get this notification. Then we change the voter's, um, address as the mailing address, as, you know, box 178 or whatever. So these lists are generated and compiled through the state and, and the Registraz Association. And that's what drives where this number is going so high. And like I say, this year, they've now having us send letters to people that haven't voted in four years. So, or it's actually two federal elections.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
That's why our purpose for our canvas was, will be so much higher this year because it, it's people who haven't voted in 2016 and 2018. So we send them a canvas letter. We had like 480 something additional on top of like the normal change of addresses. I think last Tuesday, we, last Tuesday or Wednesday, we sent out all over a thousand letters, so.
What is, what does the letter entail? Like, what is it asking?
We're trying to, we're canvassing. We're trying to find out if people still live in the area, if they are still residing in Eastline. That's the purpose of the canvas, to make sure our voter registration lists are accurate and we only have people who live in town on them. So that's why we do a canvas every year, to just make sure, like, hey, you haven't voted? Are you still here? When I was generating the list, I found people that we had missed that were, um, that had passed away. Obviously, they had not voted in a couple of years. Um, so.
Well, and that's if they didn't pass away in town, because we follow the deaths. We follow them in the obituary and also we get them from the town clerk. So if you were on vacation and you passed away three years ago, we might not have known that. Or if you were a snowbird. So that's what we catch, this is how we catch and clean the list. And believe you right now, we really want our list to be as pristine as possible.
Right. I mean, with all the, you know, um, misinformation going around about voter lists and voter fraud, um, it's important that we put in the hours to maintain an accurate voter registration list. And we do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that detailed explanation. I think that is a very worthwhile goal to try to clean up our, our voter records. And if we need to do that, I think, you know, if the last year taught us nothing, it's that we need to devote some time to getting that cleaned up. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention. So if there are no additional questions, concerns, or comments for the registrars, we can move on. We all set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, with that, let's move on to Department 116, which is zoning.
Okay, I'll present that. Budget's in front of you. There's not a whole lot going on here, but some budget, um, you know, so the, the general wage increases. This is one of those departments that doesn't have a lot to it. So if there's any questions?
Any questions for the First Selectman? It does not look like there's any questions, so we shall move on to Department 117, Planning.
So, Camille, I don't know if, if there is somebody as an attendee in your meeting here. And I don't, it's a phone number, so we don't know if it might be somebody who's supposed to be presenting or who wishes to be present. Let you handle that.
There is a caller in, um, I don't want to say waiting room, but an attendee on the webinar with a phone number of 860-739-9658. I will ask you, if you are a presenter this evening, if so, you can chat below in that option to let me know to let you in. If not, we'll keep you as an attendee. Or you can unmute yourself and speak. Okay, the listener is not chatting and not wishing to speak, so I am going to assume they are just listening in on our discussion this evening. Okay.
Which is great. Okay. I'll move on.
With that, we will.
117 is the planning department and it's GWI. It's nothing, uh, nothing, nothing to see here. Um, we did reduce, uh, as you see, the printing costs there. We have three departments down there and, you know, they're sharing one set of equipment. So we, we just kind of balanced that out a little bit this year with some of the expenses, some of the office items, supplies, printing. That's all. So there you go. Planning is pretty straightforward, as you can see.
Any questions for the First Selectman on Planning? Yes, Anna Johnson.
I just wanted to, um, mention, if you notice, like, the services, the contracted, they're all zeros now. So those are items that have been moved to the IT department. And when Mr. Braga presented that to you, he did go over those items. So I just thought I would point that out to the board.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, we can move on to Department 130, Zoning Board of Appeals.
ZBA is a board that gets together as needed, as you know. So if someone challenges a zoning decision, they can take it to ZBA. Our town has, has a history of really sticking to the rules and, you know, past practice and, um, and sticking to the zoning regulations. So, um, this board does not see a lot of appeals. And when it does, it does have the reputation of upholding zoning decisions, rightfully so. So, um, not a very big budget. It's out there. If we use it, um, great. And if we don't, we return it to the town. And if there's big cases that do come up, we'll have to come back and, and move money around from somewhere or, you know, go after the contingency. But that's happened. That's happened, uh, half a dozen years ago. There was a, a big case, I forget, or multi-night situation. Not since.
Okay. Any questions for this First Selectman on ZBA? Okay, um, very good. Seeing no questions, we can move on. Department 132, Inland Wetlands. Don't we, our inland wetland officer, call this evening, will you be speaking in his stead, Mark?
Yeah, yeah. Um, obviously Gary Geisell, multi, multi-hats he wears. And boy, if we could give him a pay raise, too, because he spends a whole lot more than his 40 or 37 and a half allotted hours. Um, many of our department heads do. And obviously, he wears multiple hats as well. The only thing you'll see on here that jumps up is a $25,000 increase for an assistant for environmental, um, for environmental planner. As you know, the inland wetlands passed a regulation that is the law of the land and it is being, um, appealed in court. It's, it's, it's a, it's a very expensive appeal where we've, uh, had to go to outside council. We couldn't use our own town council because of a situation with conflict. We are defending their decision. But should that go through, they've, not to make us all inland wetland officers, but the, um, the area of review around a wetland goes from 100 feet to now 300 feet, encompasses a majority of the towns. So someone with a, someone with a, a home that might have some wetlands 300 feet away, which is a whole football field away, would, in order to put a deck in, in order to put a shed in, in order to change a walkway, would then need to go through a permit and application process. These all need to be reviewed. Our suggestion was not to bring in, not to bring in, um, a, an employee, but utilize the services of the Council of Government, which is our regional planning, um, group. And I informed them that we may be in need of some hours to assist us going through this. Of course, if the appeal is successful, then this will all go away and we won't spend the money. This will be per diem. It will be as needed. But we do estimate $25,000, it's been set, to be set aside. That would be about the right number for a part-time person to come in and help us process this stuff. This is going to be site walks. Um, this is going to be, many of this stuff will have to come before the commission. A lot of it will be desk reviews and desk approvals, but many won't. So therefore, there'll be an increase in activity at the inland wetlands commission as well. So that's why that's there. Um, and we, uh, we're trying to find the most, um, efficient way through this. But also planning that we, well, we might be, we might own this for a full year. We already own it now, this, this regulation. So, um, and they, and, and that's, that's all I have on that. Um, answer questions.
Any questions? Yes, Anne Chikello.
Um, Mark, is the, um, the change from the Upland Review Area from 100 to 300, is that in effect or is that stayed due to the appeal?
I don't believe it's stayed. I think it is in effect. It is in effect and is being appealed, but it is current, currently the law of the land.
Oh, so then it's, it's in, okay.
And we're back.
So there's a lot more, um,
Review.
traffic for inland wetlands then, I'm assuming?
Yeah, there's a lot more. Um, um, I, I looked at a map that was shaded when we went from one to three. And I don't want to exaggerate. I'm not an inland wetlands officer. But, you know, about, more than 50% of the town, uh, more than 50% of homeowners will be affected by this. And businesses and property owners, et cetera. So, yes, it adds another layer and it adds another layer of review. And, and the town's responsibility to act appropriately.
Now, could most of these be done though by Gary Geisell, just by, you know, desk reference instead of bringing them to the inland wetlands, though?
I would think 75% of them will be done as desk reference, but that takes time. And if you're talking about the number of, well, we already heard that with the building official, right, the number of permits coming through, um, that office, the people that are upgrading their properties, putting on the deck, putting in a pool, all that now has to go through inland wetlands review. And depending on, you know, the effects, um, it, it could go to commission. It could go just desk review. But, you know, we're not rubber stamping these things. Especially with the new regulation, everyone's watching, right?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good questions.
Yes, Rich Steele.
Yes, there's a, a line for revenue. And I'm just wondering what the origin of the revenue is for this.
Is that the permits, Anna? You're still muted, Anna.
Yes, that would be.
Thanks. Yeah.
Peter DeRosa, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just following up on Anne's questions. The number, uh, the Upland Review went from 100 to 300, that's triple. You're not tripling the manpower. Um, how, how did that, I'm, I'm curious how you're going to accommodate that? Because, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the number of permits. I've been following that process. Uh, how did you come to $25,000 if it's?
I don't know that it's.
That's, that's a good number.
No, I know. And I'm not sure. It triples the activity, Peter, because some of these houses were already in the Upland Review. So it does move it out a little bit more. Um, and we're going to, we've seen increases already. We've seen all the, the permits. We have revenue coming in already. You know, it is another tax on our citizens, um, to now have to go through this other process to developers, to citizens, to you, if you wanted to do something in the back of your house. And, you know, wetlands back there, right? But, uh, but, but, you know, you had it anyway. But someone, uh, anyway, now you're expanding it. We, we think we can get it done. We think we can get it done. I think most of these applications, like I said, 75, maybe it's a higher number, will go as a desk review. We'll get through it. And there will be some kind of a routine, some kind of a thing to watch for. I think we'll get better and better and more efficient at it. Gary will, in working with the Council of Government planners, um, they will as well. And we'll, we'll do our best. And if we don't have to spend it, even better.
No, I understand. I just thought that was a pretty conservative number.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, we're, listen, this town, we, we have a planner that also is our GIS implementer, director, and also our inland wetlands guy. A town like Waterford has all three. You know, um, but, but they have the, they have a $20 million extra chunk in their budget they get to spend every year, $20,000, $20 million less a year with the same number of citizens and virtually the same number of, um, of, of services. Our baseball field isn't as nice, apparently, if you read the paper. But, um, you know what I'm saying. We'll get by, and we always do. Joe Braga, don't forget. Your, your department head, Anna Johnson, only works 75% of her time on town business. There's no other town in this area that has a part-time finance director, especially of our size with our activity. She spends 25% of the time and 25% of her pay comes from, from the Water and Sewer Commission. So, uh, we, we all, not we all, I'm, I'm not an employee, I'm elected official, but our, our department heads wear multiple hats often, often, on a daily basis. Gary, Gary will get it done. And it's a good question. Shouldn't I just multiply Gary by three? But no, I don't think our, I don't think the volume's going to go up by three. Short answer. We'll get this done. We need help, though.
Yes, Anne.
Mark, just to follow up on Peter, I just want to have a better understanding. This Council of Government. This council of government planner, is this somebody who would be working at like the town hall? Or be working like remotely that you'd send, you know, documents to, to review or like, how, how does, how would that person work? Do you know?
Um, we haven't done it before. Uh, I, I, you know, this day of working virtually, I'm hoping that things could be done, uh, from the council of governments and, you know, we won't have to pay for their time, travel, et cetera. That only adds up and it only takes away efficiency of the work product that this person will put out. But, um, but, um, maybe they do have to stop in or maybe we can, um, but I, my, my vision is that they would be able to work from the council of government offices.
Would they have to go like do site reviews too or no? Or would that still be Gary Geisell?
I think complicated things. I, I know Gary, um, is passionate about what he does. I think he went hands-on with those kinds of things.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the inland wetlands departmental budget, operational budget there? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Seeing no questions, we can move on to department one thirty-three, the Waterford East Line Shellfish Commission.
Right on, right on. Let's see. We, um, it's been a while since I looked at this number. What we did with this was we took away the pump-out boat last year. Um, and, um, there was a lot of confusion. We, the Waterford East Line Shellfish Commission obviously is a shared commission. It's chartered by the state who in a statute said, thou shall appoint X number of people East Line, that's X number of people Waterford, and you shall work together and figure this out and, and, and issue permits and take care of the shellfish beds. Um, with that, they sell permits and they have a significant balance, a, a separate account. They charge for permits. They keep their own money. That's allowed by this statute as well. Part of the requirements are they have to get audited every year, but they, they run a, um, more than a prudent balance. So last year we asked them to pay for their own pump-out boat. Um, we got, I, I would say we got some, um, affirmation from some of the people we talked to that that would be okay. When they went back to the commission, the commission rejected that. So then there was this big scramble. Um, I'm of the belief they could run a prudent, have a prudent reserve for emergencies. Um, maybe if their motor breaks on their, on their, their boat as they're checking, uh, the shellfish beds. Um, but they, um, they, it, it may be rightfully so. The towns do have a responsibility to pay for some of that pump-out boat. Anna, help me with the numbers. I think the town's responsible for a hundred, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. Am I right? And then the shellfish commission would pay fifteen hundred dollars out of their reserves and Waterford, Waterford would pay fifteen hundred dollars.
I thought it was twenty-five hundred.
Is it twenty-five? I, I'll look at the narrative.
Yes, it's twenty-five hundred.
Thank you. Okay. And that's, that's where there's, this money comes from. So we're back up to a thirty-five hundred dollar ballots or, or budget with these folks. Um, that's, uh, that would leave them a thousand left over for recording secretary, supplies, uh, gasoline for the boat, et cetera. They do also run, um, some of their expenses through their own accounts. So we're back to where we were two years ago. I tried to, I tried to twist a little bit and say, well, you have, kind of like Parks and Rec, you're taking money in, you, you expend it on your own programming. The problem is, again, I, it's not a town commission. It's a state commission, uh, with town volunteers and, you know, um, what we tried to, um, the changes we tried to make happen didn't happen. So we're going to pay our share with a, with a, with an agreement from them that we would pay a third, Waterford would pay a third, and the commission through their permits would pay a third. If there are any questions.
Any questions for the first selectmen on this, on this department? Okay. It does not look like we have any questions. So with that, we shall move on to department one thirty-four, the Brookside Farm Museum.
Um, as, as you can see, there's a very little change on this. Their utility bills are going up a little bit. So are yours and so are mine. Um, so, um, they, they're asking for just a few extra dollars on the utility bill. Um, they, they, I did question them about their curator. They curated no work this past year. With the pandemic, they're just, you know, everything got shut down. And this is one area of savings. They didn't spend the money. Um, they, they will return it to, uh, fund balance. Obviously, there'd be a lot of those kinds of things in, in, in departments. Um, so, but they are asking to reinstate that curator, um, continue with the curator. They already have it. And everything else. And they're a great op, they're a great, uh, organization. They have gotten some new blood. They revitalized a little bit with their rebranding and, um, of course COVID shut them down, but they're going to, they'll build again.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on department one thirty-four? Yes, Anne.
Thanks, Camille. Um, yeah, I, I noticed, uh, you know, the, uh, the curator leaving and, um, the narrative states that, um, he, the intention is to replace him after the first of the year. So, um, I guess the begs the question, you know, do, you know, is that six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars needed? Um, and could it be halved?
I don't know. Honestly, I mean, they, they pay per hour and maybe they would get somebody to come in in January but work twice as hard or, you know, the hours. I think their intention is to maintain. I, I specifically asked Gary Lucowski, great guy, and, uh, he's trying to find someone to take this over. Um, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of helpers, but nobody wants to cook. Uh, nobody wants to be the head chef. Uh, he's, he, he indicated the sixty-one would be necessary. I was trying to find ways to curb that back a little bit. He indicated he would appreciate the sixty-one.
Well, I'm assuming that there's work to make off because, uh, it's an ongoing effort. So someone has to make that up sometime. Okay.
But your, your point is well made. Um, my comments back to Gary based on your feedback is don't come asking for sixty, uh, twelve thousand, uh, three hundred and sixty dollars next year, um, because you started in January. It's still going to be sixty-one, eighty. Um, just this doesn't represent a half a year. It represents a whole year of spending on a curator, however you spend it. If that makes sense.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Good question. Good question.
Other questions on department one thirty-four? Okay. Seeing no further questions, we can move on to department one thirty-five, the Town Building Committee.
Well, I've got good news. I'm not planning on building any of other buildings. Um, so, uh, the town building committee has done a remarkable job over the last three, four years with these schools. They finally, I think, finally closed out the schools at their last meeting or the meeting prior. Uh, of course, the police building is in full build right now. That will be winding down. That should be done almost at the end of this fiscal year. We, and of course, there'll be a lot of tie-ins. They'll, they'll meet a few times. But as you can see, they're going back to their old regular schedule, which is a recording secretary meeting once a month and, 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 and as needed. So, um, there you go. Very lean budget as always.
Okay. Any questions or comments on department one thirty-five? It's remarkable the amount of work that this all volunteer committee does perform for the town of East Line. They are much appreciated. Um, um, I'm sure that you'll extend our gratitude to them, Mark. Yeah, really appreciate all the hard work. All right. With that, we'll move on to department one thirty-six harbor management.
If there are any questions, um, be happy to answer them. It's a flat, I think it's a flat budget from reading, right? It is. Um, another, you know, all the, all these committees, as, as quickly as we're going through them are all, you know, um, man, man, they're, they're, they're men and women who serve on these commissions that are doing important work because every piece of the puzzle is important. And, um, you know, we're a coastal town with an active harbor. And, um, of course this is important. So, uh, God bless them, just like everybody else on all these different commissions.
Well said. Any questions on harbor management? Seeing no questions, we can move on to department one thirty-eight, Conservation of Natural Resources. Another department that has a zero percent increase year over year.
So if there's any questions, I'll answer them. If I, it's my best of my knowledge. They, they do good work behind the scenes a little bit. And, um, and some of the, uh, results you'll see at Darrow Pond and other, are the other places.
So I, I do have a question, Mark, about this particular department. I've, you know, I do live right across the street from the Darrow's Pond, um, Goodwin Trail, and I have noticed a significant increase in litter over there. And it just is starting to look very sad. So if we wanted to continue to be responsible as a town for some of these beautiful recreation areas, how, what is the best way that you see making sure that they're safe and clean and monitored? Would it be within each individual budget or do you envision that something going to, say, public works?
So it will be maintained. Uh, we do have a plan in place, um, that the Parks and Rec Commission will be taking, um, control of the, um, not the trails. The trail system seems to be a group of volunteers and the Friends of Oswego Gachi Hills technically have, have the easement, as you remember, because you were around for all that. Um, Friends of Oswego Gachi Hill holds a conservation easement and is responsible for the, the two hundred acres we have in reserve. But the hundred acres, which is, you know, there are some proposals that may have hit the newspaper. Um, there's a lot of chatter about it and this, you know, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but there's a lot of talk about adding facilities up there, maybe a dog park, maybe disc golf, maybe, you know, protecting the cotton tail habitat and pollinator, pathways, um, up there, et cetera, and expanding the parking lot as well. That would, might come from some of the COVID money, but, um, there's a whole lot of, um, need, uh, before we get to want. So we'll see what that turns out to, turns into. We do have, we are struggling with Darrow Pond. It only has ten parking spaces. And what we're finding out is on the weekends, those, when those tens are, ten spaces are gone, people have no place to go and you can't really park on Mawstery Road. So we do have to put some attention to it. It being so far away from all our other, um, parks and public land that's not on the way to anything. So it is a deliberate trip out there, but, uh, Dave knows that it's finally, not finally, well, I guess sort of finally, it's been almost ten years since we've owned that property. Uh, it's time to start putting some attention to it. The Park and Rec has, has petitioned the Board of Selectmen to make that an official park and rec designated space, official park. Um, with that will come Dave's responsibilities. He's asking for another maintainer. Hopefully that will be granted in, in your budget this year. As you know, he needs it. I mean, straight out. I think you got a list today of all his spaces that he's responsible for. Um, and i- if it's not on there already, it will be, but I, it's probably on there because they go up already and try to empty the trash and all that. But it's, it's, Camille, it's on the radar now. All the people that like to go out and, and, and walk trails, but also walk their dogs on those trails or ride their BMX bikes on it. Um, it's on the radar and people are finding it. And it's not just Oswego Gachi Hills anymore. It's this. And, uh, we need to put more attention to it. But it's not a volunteer group and it's certainly not the conservation of natural resources who are responsible. It's a town property and we need to do a better job.
Okay. Yeah, no, no, that's a perfectly acceptable explanation. I just wanted to understand who would have the ultimate responsibility for keeping it safe and clean. I think you answered that. So thank you. If there's no other questions on this department one thirty-eight, we can move on to, uh, the last operational department that we will discuss this evening, one thirty-nine Historic Properties Commission.
Yeah, so, oh, um, how we've struggled with this over the years. The good news is maybe this is something that will grab some COVID money. And we can finally just finish the darn building. Um, and even though we kind of thought volunteers were going to do it over the years, but finish the darn building, make it a museum site, make it a tourism site, tie it in with the other two buildings and properties and really have a bona, bona fide outdoor activity, you know, destination. Uh, and maybe that's a, another worthy cause with some of this COVID, um, um, American relief money. I'll speak to the, their budget specifically. They went from two thousand to three thousand dollars under service contracts. And if you look, what they did was they added a thousand dollar website. Part of it, um, uh, you know, the, many of these commissions run independently and what happened is during COVID, when they realized, well, you know, things were going to have to change and, you know, we're not going to do this and we're not going to do that. Well, they took some of their money and they got a web developer, um, a web designer and, and got a website. Um, it's, it's handsome. It's, it's what historic houses do to attract people because it gets linked and, and people find it, much like the Goodwin Trail. They find it over the years. Um, so, you know, I do, I, I would have supported that, but they did it on their own and they did it. And here we are with a thousand dollar annual bill, uh, for it. Um, their fundraising has gained momentum. I'll say that. And they have some great leadership. Ben Bullock and, and friends, uh, great leadership up there. Um, if you haven't driven by it, it's impressive. Um, it looks like a different house. They've, they've really, you know, there's a, and then there's a chunk of the house that really needs work. And this is what we'll be funding this year. So as you can see, um, you know, this is, this is where they're at. I didn't reduce their building maintenance account. They said they needed a, a thousand dollars for, to purchase lumber. That was probably before the lumber, uh, it just went up ten times the cost. I just saw on the news this morning. Um, lumber's out of control, but they thought it was a thousand dollars to purchase lumber to replace the second floor of the barn so they could start using it. And I said, you know what? Maybe we hold off on that because you've got the website and I'm giving you money for other things. Let's do this. Let's, let's walk before we can run. Let's do one project at a time. So we would do something, we raised something else and the bottom line is that they're, they're, they're slated to get by, by our, by our request, uh, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, a reduction of a thousand dollars. Um, but that's a whole lot more than zero, which we were funding that several years. So, um, this is of course the Samuel Smith House. Um, it says historic properties, um, but primarily they are focused on the Samuel Smith House. I'm sorry, I should have said that up front. Are there any questions?
Yes, John.
Just a comment. Uh, if you go into the library and go in the main door, and I, I haven't been there yet, but somewhere inside that door is a model of the Sam Smith House. Of the, of the house, the barn and the grounds. Now, my, my, my next door neighbor made it. He spent all winter making it. And you should see it. The thing is unbelievable. The way he, uh, set this up and, and made the model of it, the house and everything else that goes with it.
Awesome.
Have you been out yet, Mark, yet or not?
I'm, uh, no, I'm supposed to meet him, um, and, and be there for a photo op, but, um, I haven't seen it yet. We, we gave it them permission to set it up and arrange it with the library. It's in the lobby in that little nook, um, off to the right side. Uh, not in the library, but in the, well, the lobby of the East Line Commission. Go down and take a look, but also go down and see the house.
Right.
And I encourage you, like they encourage me, like they encourage the selectmen, um, to show up at their events. They, um, they really get a big kick when we, when we show up.
I was down at the last one and, uh, we showed them how to make product.
There you go. Think of how much money you're saving.
I know.
Any questions?
Yes, Anne.
Thanks. Um, so Mark, ha- has, have, um, have the Sam Smith folks showed up at your, um, Board of Selectmen meetings concerning the use of COVID dollars? Or are they planning to do so? Because like, I kind of liked your idea of. Board of Selectmen meetings concerning the use of COVID dollars? Or are they planning to do so? Because I, I kind of liked your idea of, you know,
Yeah.
getting that place finished with some federal dollars, but have they, have they made a plea or will they?
I, I can't, there are so many groups making pleas right now. I feel like Father Christmas. But, um, and who's been naughty and who's been nice. I don't think they have. I think this is more, several of the selectmen we're talking about. You know, let's get this monkey off our back. And, um, and you know, it doesn't have to be perfect. It doesn't have to be Williamsburg, Virginia, but let's make sure the thing doesn't fall over. And for many years, we were worried about that. So let's shore up the roof, get the beam in, finish the siding and, and, and also with all that, take away some of the liability risk that the town owned as a result of the public going through this property. So, um, you know, we're all winners with that, but I'm glad you, you, you like that idea. I, I think it, you know, again, needs first and then wants. Um, I'm getting calls from others about this, this East Line baseball field. John, I'm glad you brought it up. You know, a property we already have that really needs to be fixed once and for all. So we're going to go look at what that might entail, but we'll, we'll talk. We're going to have meetings about this and you'll all, you'll all be involved, I'm sure.
I think we've had some prior discussions about this, but I, I need a memory refresh, if you will, Mark. Because the town owns the Samuel Smith homestead, can we or can we not accept donations on behalf of that building and that property?
They can, because they're also a 501(c)(3) and it's the Friends of the Samuel Smith House, just like the Friends of Brookside Farm. They raise money. You know, the Christmas tree sale guy in front of them, he gives them a check every year. So they use their, because that's their property, not the school's property. And the weddings that they might have in the barn, you know, they might make $500 on a weekend. Yes, they, they're also 501(c)(3)'s or at least private entities and they have friend, friend groups. The town is responsible. We ensure it. It is a town property. We maintain the grounds. It's something else that Dave took over, as you saw on his list. He took over the maintenance of that property.
Okay. So I, I would just say for anybody that listens or cares, the website is samuelsmithfarmstead.org. And if we are going to be paying for the website development and maintenance going forward, I would suggest that a page or a tab gets added to that website for donations.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah. I've, uh, I, I'll certainly make that suggestion to them. It won't be the first time. Not that specific. Your, your point is a good point, but over the years, just said, come on, come on, get, reach out. Look what the library does. Look at how much money they make in their campaign. We all give. Not that I'm paying attention, but we all give, you know, that's a hundred bucks. But when you send that out and, you know, thousand people respond with a hundred bucks, it's pretty good. So hopefully they'll, they'll get it. They get a lot of good momentum, but they've had their hands full too. They've been hammering and sawing away. So it's coming. It's coming.
All right. Thanks. Um, if there's no further questions, that concludes the review of the departmental budgets. Yes, Anna?
Within the departmental budgets, we did list Department 724. I don't know if you want to take a quick look through that. We kind of skipped over after Parks and Rec and went right to the registrars.
I didn't think anybody, any other department, I thought we were through Department 724 because we were handling 724 items after each operational department. So I, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to move on to the CIP, which is what? The 10-year out, the 10-year outlook?
Yeah. The rolling 10-year outlook.
So, so that does conclude the operational departments unless you think there's something we missed, Anna? Do you, do you think? I don't think so either in Department 724. So let's, so let's talk about the CIP plan. Is everybody able to review that? Yes, Anne Chikella?
I just have a question. On the capital CIP plan, is there a way that any of the costs associated can be used with the, what is it? American relief funds so that we could take it out of our, you know, budget possibly?
There's, um, we can't use it for operation and yes, we can possibly use it for capital. And we are exploring that, that possibility. And if that, again, when the final instructions come out from the US Treasury, we'll, we'll make that determination. As we go into appropriations, and we bring the fire truck in front of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, a fire truck might be too dramatic. It's $6,000. But, you know, we, we did talk about a very good example and, and I, on here somewhere is those microwaves that we need to, and you remember that. And there's a two-year plan and we were putting it through the acquisition plan and all that. Well, that, number one, it's capital, but number two, it's IT. And I, and number three, it's, um, it's first responders. You know, it's, it's first responder communication. Those are, that's three checkboxes. We're pretty sure we'll probably make that suggestion. So there are going to be some reductions, but I think we have to look at the capital as is tonight, today, and, and plan for it. And then if we can move money out of, out of asking the taxpayers to pay for it through the acquisition plan, through bonding and all that, we will do that. The stuff that's, go ahead.
I was going to say, so there's nothing, like when we deliberate, it's still going to be as it is. In other words, that's how we have to look at it. That's what.
Yeah, because we don't have the money in hand yet. We don't have direction. So the stuff in your, in, in budget 724, you know, your capital budget definitely is staying within 724. When you get to the capital plan, much of this comes from either, well, some of it's grants, low SIP money and all that. And some of it is bonding and some of it is acquisition plan where we go out of a five-year car payment, a 60-year, 60-month plan. When we get to that, we might be able to go, eh, we're going to take it out of the American Rescue instead of going to bond, going to acquisition. And that's, I think, when we can do that. That's my.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good question. I'd be very confused with all this coming out.
So, so Mark, to continue with that discussion a bit, so we could actually prioritize in a way that kind of gets us in line with the money that you may be getting, it looks like you're getting in June. So, so there could be, that's one approach, I guess. We could, we could do that possibly.
Right, right.
Those regulations won't come out for another few weeks, but, and the disbursement won't be here till June.
Right.
But it'll certainly be available into the new fiscal year. So, um, I guess there is a way, sorry there. There is a way of prioritizing so that if it's clear, you know, that we can use the funding, you know, uh, for those categories and to fit the regulations, then we could, uh, you know, keep that in mind, you know? It's something could be shelved, but it's, it's, it's a very difficult, I see your point. I mean, it is a difficult ask, you know?
We, we, I hope that the Board of Selectmen, I hope the Board of Finance can strike a balance between just doing a shopping spree and, and checking off our wish lists of all the things that we would love to have. Open space and, you know, more recreation and fixing certain things. We have three dams in town that will take up about a million dollars of the 1.9 that we have. And we are being told by the state, go get them fixed. So we can either go to bond and go fix these dams, or we can use the American Rescue Funds. So there's, and there'll be a lot more detail coming up. We could, we could talk for hours on this stuff. The bottom line is if we take away some, you know, take away things that would, would have been bonded, take away things that would have gone into acquisitions, it's not going to save any money in your mill rate this year. Really? Because it's all, you know, well, you'll save a little bit in your acquisition. You won't have the 12 payments out of 60. But it'd be small money, small money compared to, um, well, but you know, you're saving for many years and, and, and we don't want to waste a dime of this. We don't want to act foolishly with this money. We want to make sure we put it to best use and we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Together.
Okay.
I don't, I, 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 do you want me to go line by line, Camille? I mean, you guys have seen this. You're looking at it. There's things that stick out that you might have questions on. I, you know, the brown, the brown color is, I believe, I believe CNRE money. Is that right, Anna? Tell me when I'm wrong. Yeah, I remember from seven budgets now. The brown is CNRE. That's the money we put aside in our buckets. As you can see right at the top, we're putting money away now for a revale that will be five years from now. Why get to the fifth year? But I'll tell you what, every time we want to cut the budget and we're trying to get to a number that we pull out of the sky, you know, that is often one of the things we attack. Say, well, let's just go grab this now and we'll, we'll pay for it later.
Mark, what was that number for the revale?
Anna, what was the number we divided everything into for the revale?
So in the CIP, in the 2122 fiscal year, we're showing $85,380.
What's the total number? We have the 85 in front of us. Do you know what the, um, the five?
Okay, so, um, in terms of the ask, what I did, I had a discussion with the assessor and I asked her, when is the next statistical revaluation? And when is the next physical revaluation? I mean, we have one that's in progress right now. And when is the next full physical? And I looked at, okay, the estimated cost of them today is a dollar amount. And then I set up a worksheet for the duration of this plan and I used, you know, I, I used increases over time in what the annual cost will be at the point in time when we're going to need to do the statistical and the next full revale. And then I just, you know, prorated it by fiscal year so that we would have enough money when we needed it. So the budget is actually, a portion of it is actually asking for some of the full physical revale and some is for the statistical revale. This way, it's, you know, what I was attempting to do was make it a real, true 10-year plan. What are we going to need year by year over the next 10 years to meet these needs?
So $742,000 over 10 years.
Which includes the next statistical revale and the next full, full revale.
Right. Does that make sense, John?
Yes, thank you.
Because the number's all the way over. So she's, she's looking at both of those because it never ends. Soon as you get done with one, we're getting ready to pay for the next one. You know, the purple color is your low SIP money. That's just, and that's really why we do a capital plan. The number one reason why we do this is because in order to get low SIP, low, um,
Local capital improvement.
Local capital improvement. Um, yeah. So for money from the state is we need to list capital, capital jobs. And we try to be as generic as possible. So when the money comes in and we have a need, we can, you know, well, here it is over here. Generically, we have town, townwide parking lot repairs. Well, we do need the parking lots fixed. Oh shoot, was it middle school and high school? There were a couple that they listed and that's, that's the plan, I think. You see it a couple of years out, the old highway garage generator, the carpet replacement, garage door, they're there and they might slide over the, over the next several years. Anything in black is in your budget book under 724. It took me only about five years to figure that out. But in year seven, I got it figured out. You see, you see blue color on the second page at the top. That's a microwave link thing that I was talking to Anne Chikella about. We, we have a plan to spend $66,000 this year, $33,000 the next year, and $33,000 the next year after that. And, you know, it's a, it's a $33,000 plan to replace all the microwave dishes on all our communications towers throughout town. It's, um, maybe that's something that should be done with one check out of the American Rescue Fund and we'll, we'll discover that. So before we, actually, you know, all this stuff will be coming back to you through the appropriations process. Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Meeting. We'll be having town meetings again as all the executive orders expire on May 20th. So we'll be back to the regular routine.
We, we think, we think they, we hope they expire on May 20.
We hope, right. We hope things don't surge and do funny things, but Governor released, um, well, he's loosening up on May 20th with bars and restaurants and performance centers and all that. So we think we're seeing the end of that. As of now, you're right, you're right, Camille. As of now, it looks like we'll be back to normal government on May 20th, which is why we're considering moving the referendum to the 19th to fit into the special rules. There'll be more of that coming up. The Board of Selectmen have to have that discussion first. Are there questions on any page or any item that may have been listed? Most of this is self-explanatory. We've gone through it. That Knox box at the end of page two is in red. I forget what red is. What's red, Anna?
So that, that particular shade of, of red is to use resources that are currently available in the CNRE fund to appropriate for that purpose.
Um, and the original cost was $20,000. We were going to have a firm come in and replace all the Knox boxes. And I said, um, let's see, fire marshals, they have to go to every business in town once a year, right? For an inspection? Well, yeah, they do. Why don't you bring a screwdriver with you? And why don't, every time you go to a business, get out on that Knox box and unscrew it and put it back in. So I'll buy a really fancy electric screwdriver if you'd like, but you guys could do this and we don't have to do it in one day. We could do it over the course of 12 months. And that's what we're going to do. So, um, and that made sense. And you know what? That they spend a little bit more time in each business, they'll probably build a relationship with them. And that's not a bad thing either. So, um, are there any other questions?
So, so I actually don't have any questions for, you know, the 21, 2022 budget year. I think we pretty much covered it when we were going over each department's capital plan. You know, certainly there are some alarm bells that are ringing as I look out over the next couple of years, but I don't know if we really need to spend any time on that this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of, once you get past the first year, Camille, you and I know this, everything else is a placeholder. And it might be a little bit pie in the sky, wish list stuff. Yeah, we'd love a new life or expansion on the library. Of course, we have some options now on that, but many other things, um, you know, a new fire station. I think both of them are asking for fires. Saying, well, you know what? It's been there for the 22 years I've been in town, uh, all these commissions. And they keep fighting out a little bit, you know? So, yeah, I, I question them too. They're out there and they'll keep sliding. Until we need it, but it's out there. Any questions from anyone else?
Any additional questions for the First Selectmen or perhaps the Finance Director? On the CIP 10-year plan? Okay. I don't see any further questions. So I think we're, I think we're good with that. And now we can actually move on to Agenda Item 2B, which is Review of the Projected Revenues. Anna, do you want to walk us through that?
Um, yeah, sure. Um, so one thing I, I, I do want to begin with is talking about the current revenues. So at your last meeting, I, when I went over the end of year projections as well as an estimated projected fund balance at the end of the year, I talked about having a deficit in the current taxes of over $700,000. And so, you know, the day of the meeting, I did give an update as the tax collector sent me a report at the end of the day. And I had him, since we're meeting tonight, I had him do the same thing. And the, the total current year collections as of the end of business today was a little over $614,000, which is. which is, um, oh, you know, just about two, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars greater than what I was projecting at the end of March, we would get through the end of the year. So with that said, um, I, you know, just using that number and I allowed about a hundred and fifty thousand for May and June collections because that's somewhat, um, I mean, that's what, uh, I've looked at the last two fiscal years to see what we collected in the last two months of the year. One year was, um, a hundred and fifty thousand and the other year was about two hundred and forty thousand. So I used the lower of the two numbers. And, um, with that said, we would end up, um, within a, that would be at seven hundred and seventy thousand. So the shortfall, um, goes from, uh, the seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to four hundred and three thousand dollars. So that also improves, um, like with the projection I did as of March thirty-first, it showed that we would actually use all of the unassigned fund balance that we applied to this year's budget. So with that update that I just gave you, um, we would actually, uh, use about six hundred and twenty-five thousand of the nine hundred. So the number has come down. Um, and, uh, you know, hopefully it'll come down even more because I'm just using the six fourteen that we've collected through today. And we still have a good week and a half left to go through the end of the month. So I think that's some, um, you know, some positive news. And I thought it was appropriate to bring it to your attention this evening since we were talking about, um, the projected revenues for, um, next year's budget. So we can go to the list. So, um, the first part of the list where the accounts begin, oh, one, oh, one, those are all of the projected revenues as related to tax collection. So we have, um, uh, you know, the current, the current grant list projection, prior year taxes, interest in liens for current years, interest in liens for prior years. And then it, you know, we do charge, um, return check fees. And then, um, we get attorney fees if we use the attorney. When the taxpayers do pay their taxes, they have to pay for our, any legal fees that we've incurred. So that's what you see there. So those are what our projections are. For prior year grant lists, interest in liens, I, I, you know, I keep, um, a ten-year history and I kind of use that relative to, um, what, you know, what we collect in order to come up with, um, projections. And of course, um, I do use, uh, try to be as conservative as possible with the protections. The next section, um, of the revenues that go on, oh, one, oh, two, oh, one, oh, three, and oh, one, oh, four, those are, are any state and federal grants that we receive. And those numbers are, um, projected based on, um, the governor's, uh, proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget. The next section, um, oh, one, oh, five, those revenues are, um, you know, fees that we charge for various services. The one at the top of the list is building permits. And we did, um, increase, uh, this year, um, in our budget, we, uh, projected, uh, three hundred and sixty-one and we did increase it, um, to four twenty-seven, five. Initially, the, um, the building official did give a more aggressive number based on this year and the prior year's, um, collections. But, uh, when we were discussing it at the Board of Selectmen, uh, level, they, um, actually wanted to bring it down a bit, uh, to be somewhat more, more conservative. So it, that, you know, those types. And then, um, we have interest return. You know, the rates are really not, um, that great at this point in time. And then the, um, oh, one, oh, eight sections are other, um, charges for services. You'll see, uh, the tuition from the other districts. And, um, that's a number that the Board of Education provides to us. And if you look in the budget books that they provided to us under Tab Four, you'll see that projection, the two million, nine fifteen, nine twenty. And on these revenues, I, you know, I do seek input from the department heads. I look at the ten-year history, um, that I keep as well as, um, you know, I also have conversations with the department heads to come up with, um, come up with these projections. I would like to bring your attention to, oh, one, oh, eight, eight hundred, eight twenty-two. You'll see that, um, in this year's budget, we have a hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. In next year's budget, the increase is three seventeen, eight thirty-six. And what this is from is when we have capital projects that we bond for, once the projects are completed, um, any remaining funds that are not going to be used for the project or any, um, uh, when we sell the bonds, we, um, we have been getting premium dollars. And we use the premium dollars to pay, um, the interest on the short-term notes. But any of those dollars that are remaining when the project is completed, we're supposed to use those funds to pay down on the debt. So I, you know, I look at the projects that we have completed and, um, make that production, um, you know, based on that, that information. And I mean, actually, once the school projects are done and we start, um, you know, paying on those, you, you know, there'll be, um, some additional resources for this particular, um, operating transfer in. The dog revenue, which is the eight hundred, eight thirty-two account, that is, we, we bill Waterford for fifty percent of the wages relative to the animal control officer and the assistant animal control officer. And then any overtime, um, the, um, one of the police lieutenants keeps a log for both Waterford and Eastline. And so the overtime is billed at a hundred percent of what's relative to each of the towns. And then, of course, we have, um, in the, uh, account ending in eight forty-three, that's the ambulance, um, subsidy for the, um, two newest firefighters. And we did keep the fund balance at the same level of nine hundred thousand. And, um, um, at the end of each fiscal year, the Parks and Rec, um, is supposed to provide the town with a ten thousand dollar operating transfer in from their special revenue fund for all the programs they, that they run. So that's kind of like, um, you know, like a high, high-level, overview. And I, I don't know if anyone has any specific questions?
Does anybody have any revenue questions for Anna?
I do.
Yes, Sam.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, thanks, Anna, for going, uh, into some detail because you, you answered one or two of my questions right there. Um, just wondering about town aid road, you know, the money that, uh, you know, Joe uses for, for road fixing and that, that state grant that we get. So the, I, I, you know, sometimes I'll go and look at the CCM-generated, you know, list of grants, uh, which is based on the governor's budget. But I always, I always seem to have like a higher number, like, um, so here, I believe it was three sixteen, uh, three hundred and sixteen thousand, two fourteen. Is that correct? Uh, well, that's actually according to CCM. And then here, it's, it's a higher number. So I'm just wondering why that might be? Or do we, does this, is this, uh, in flux in any way?
No, as I said, that's based on, um, the information provided in the governor's proposed budget. And then there are two components of that. One is like town aid road. And then there's another, it's about twenty thousand. And it's all in that one account, um, as we use it for road money. It's, it, it has a different name, um, infrastructure. Bear with me, I'm looking for my, um, my state sheet.
And the only reason why I raised it is because all the other numbers that I had from CCM were, were accurate. You know, the other grant dollars were matched identically, but that one did not. So just curious there.
I, you know what? Um, I will make a note on my agenda to, um, look into that and, um, report it back to you at the meeting on Wednesday, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, thanks. And, and my only other, uh, question, as I said, you answered a couple of others. The NSEP grant, is that just totally gone for twenty-one, twenty-two? I believe that's about, um, halfway down page one, the Nuclear Safety Emergency Prep Grant?
Yeah, so it's, so those are all grants that we come, we do the special appropriations for.
Okay.
So there, they, the way that you, you have to submit an application and it goes through the application and then they send you an award letter. And we typically come to the boards for special appropriations for those.
Okay, so that, that'll be coming and going. Okay, thanks, Anna. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Anna, I have one question on the ambulance fund subsidy for the firefighters. Is this upcoming budget year the last year that we'll receive that subsidy? I can't remember when it started. I think it was a, a three-year phase in?
With additional, um, we, there is, um, I believe that there's a provision in the contract where it, it, it continues to roll over on a year-to-year basis unless, until one party gives the other party notice of termination.
I thought there was an expiration to that or like a, a phased-in, um, or phased-out subsidy over a three-year period?
The original plan was like that. It was going to be three years, then we would pick up the cost. But I think, I thought they were committed to this for the long haul. In the end, I'll go back and look at the contract. Because they're committed to it, you know, in their budget, they're committed to it, uh, for the long haul. This wasn't to get us up to speed, this was to share costs.
So you're saying they're committed to paying for this for the long haul?
I believe so. We'll go back and look at the contract. We had so many, so many cracks at the bat here. Let me figure out which one we ended up with. But I, I, I do believe the plan was for them to continue this.
Okay.
Anna, is that how you remember it?
Yes, it is. I made a note on my agenda, I'm going to go and take a look at that.
Any other questions on any revenue line item? Okay, if there's no further questions on the revenue component of the budget, we can move on and talk about the CNRE fund sheet that Anna had distributed to us. So while Anna's getting her paperwork together, I think that you could say that this is the type of tracking mechanism we have that identifies what excess dollars are left over after a project is complete. Would, would you say that's accurate, Anna?
Yes.
And so that this is where we would track how much money comes into that OTI operating transfer and revenue account?
No, that, that comes from the bonded capital projects.
Just bonding?
Yes.
About a year or so ago, we went through and identified a lot of these, uh, projects that were completed where there were some funds hanging out there. And we made some adjustments to take that off the books, correct?
What we did with the remaining balances is we put it into, um, a town projects account within the CNRE fund so that the fund, the remaining funds could be appropriated out for other projects that, um, come up in the future.
I don't know if you want to walk us through this and give us any highlights? Or you just want me to open it up for questions?
Well, my plan was to go through it with you. And it's, I'm having, uh, trouble laying my hands on my copy of the report. I'm sorry to say.
See if I can. Why don't I suggest we take just a five-minute break? While Anna gets her hands on that report. So the time is eight sixteen, let's circle back at eight twenty-one. And, um, sound like a plan? Okay, thanks, everyone. Hi, everyone, the time is now eight twenty-four. We are resuming the Eastland Board of Finance Special Meeting of Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Anna Johnson will now begin to walk us through, uh, an analysis of the CNRE fund.
Okay, so, um, do you want me to just go through the projects where we have remaining funds?
Um, that's, that's a good way to do it. And then if anybody has any specific questions on any other line items, they can ask at the end.
Okay, so the very, the very first, um, account you'll see with the remaining balance is actually the revaluation project account. So as, as you know, um, we currently have a revale project going on and we have an encumbered balance of one hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Expended year-to-date, four hundred ninety-four thousand. And then we do have a remaining balance of a little over a hundred and six thousand. The next account we see is the CAD software and survey, survey equipment. This is equipment that our engineers, um, do use when they, um, you know, some of it is when they go out and do the stormwater monitoring that they need to do for the town. And so this is one of those accounts that we do appropriate to every year in CNRE. There's a current balance, um, current expended balance. And then we have a remaining balance of a little over eight thousand dollars. The Sam Smith House, uh, town matching grant. This is something that, um, was budgeted into CNRE this current fiscal year. And I will say that the grant, um, just went in within the last thirty to sixty days. So this is something that's in progress. And the reason that the town budgeted the ten thousand dollars is in order to apply for the grant, we needed to provide, uh, the town needed to provide matching funds. The, uh, P-share grant, that is the grant that we received from the state. There's a small, uh, fifty-six hundred dollar balance left. We received that at the end of last fiscal year, if you recall. And that is the, those are the funds that we use to upgrade the, um, the system in the meeting room. So when we're back to in-person meetings, uh, hopefully everyone will be, uh, satisfied, happy with the improvements, um, to the communications in that room. The Eastlime Transfer Station improvements, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five. That is a, an appropriation that we did this fiscal year. Um, and I, um, and that project, um, we should be starting, um, anytime now. If you remember, Bill Shear came to one of your meetings and gave a presentation on what the plan is for that. Fire marshal vehicle, um, we had an appropriation, uh, within the last couple of years for the new vehicle. And there's a small balance left. ACO vehicle, the same. The Waterford Eastline Police Boat, we have that last appropriation for the motor in this year's, um, budget from going in from CNRE. And if you remember, when the police gave their budget presentation, they did mention that Waterford will try to apply for a grant. So if, um, we're, the grant is successful, then we'll just need to pay a smaller share and the remaining balance can be reallocated to, um, another project. Couple of accounts with small balances. The next section, um, going on to the top of page two, um, the, um, the accounts begin, oh, wait a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, Public Works Reserve, that account with a fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollar balance. That, those are funds that were part of that reallocation we did in the fund last year. So, um, there were previous projects I've there were previous projects, I believe there were vehicles or something that was remaining funds. And so since they were public works related, we put them in a reserve specifically titled for public works. The next account is Commission on Aging, the buses that they purchase. And this is a particular line item that's tied to a state grant. And actually, we just took possession of the bus not long ago and we did, in fact, receive the state funds. And there is a remaining balance in the account of $7,000. The next account, Parks and Rec Gator. There's a small remaining balance. That's a project that I believe was from this current fiscal year. LoSiP Reserve Town Clerk. With that is, is with every land record deed that's filed, there's a certain portion of the fee that per state statute, we're supposed to allocate it for town capital projects. And so every year, we have a specific revenue account. So at the end of the year, what I do is whatever is collected, I add it to that particular account balance. And if we have a project that, you know, would meet the criteria to spend the funds, we would come before the board to appropriate them out. The next account proceeds from the sale of vehicles. When we sell vehicles, the revenues are put into this fund. And again, the same thing, at the end of the fiscal year, whatever revenues are collected, if we sell any vehicles, gets added to this budget account. Police vehicles and equipments from fees. This is, we actually had an appropriation at your meeting last week. This is the fees that we get when our police, police officers are on outside jobs. So since the inception of collecting those fees, we've collected over 300, you know, close to $327,000. These are the funds that are used to pay the acquisition payments on the vehicles that are purchased for the police vehicles, police department, rather. This is, the next section of accounts that begin 3270045, and they go all the way down to 3270045020110. These are projects that are, that we're doing with the local capital improvement funds that we receive from the state. They make an allocation available to cities and towns every year. And actually, the funds just became available to us last month. And when the funds came in, I added the funds to the very first account called LoSiP Project Allocation Funds. So that's the balance that we have right now, $144,226. That's available for us to, you know, appropriate for projects. And then this is just the list of projects that we've done over the last few years. The way that I've set up the accounts is, like the third number in 045, that's our town number with the state of Connecticut. And then the 016020, those are the project numbers that the state has assigned to the projects that you see listed here. And then you see what was appropriated for the project, what's expended, and what any remaining balances are. If you look down, you'll see the Eastline Transfer Station, $102,000. When we did the appropriation this year for the the one that's further up on the 128, we were going to use the combination of those funds with the LoSiP funds to get the project done. And then what we will do is any, like any funds that aren't needed of what's appropriated, will leave remaining in LoSiP so that we can have the state reallocate them for us to use on another project. The other project, let's see. Ceiling, the brick on town buildings, that's an outstanding project that we haven't moved forward with at this point in time. There's a small balance left in the Niantic Fire Park, Niantic Fire Department Parking Lot and Septic System. We will request that the state, you know, allow us to put them back into our pool of funds. I've talked about the transfer station. The ceiling project that's ongoing. And then the last project that we haven't completed is the air handlers at the town hall. We had allocated $85,000 for that project. We believe it's actually going to cost more, so we had to wait until we received our additional entitlement, you know, to be able to move forward with that. So that's something that'll be coming on our radar shortly. And I'll just mention the Darrell Pond Dam Project, you know, when Mr. Nickerson spoke earlier, talked about, we have like 100, what, $100,000 or $1 million worth of dam projects that we could do? That means it's a big number.
Number, it's not quite that much, but it's, it's up there.
Yeah, so like the Darrell Pond Dam Project, there were some items there that we had to take, we had to take care of. Because we have to get, we have reports that we have to send to the state on the condition of our dams. And there were some notable deficiencies. So we use some of these funds to take care of that. Okay, then we get down to the HVAC Pump Replacement Townwide. This is like an annual ongoing appropriation that goes into this account. We have just under $11,000 available at this point in time. The same with townwide roof replacements. We have about $46,000 remaining. We currently allocated $115,000 for sidewalks. And then, if you remember, we do put money into CNRE every, every year for replacement of townwide servers. And the balance we have there is $17,748. Going on to the next page, Cheney Park Restrooms, we have a balance there of $20,000. I, I will, you know, I'll check with our town engineer to see if he'll be spending any more of these funds. If not, then though, you know, those funds, we would be able to reallocate elsewhere. Now, the townwide projects account, we have 89, currently have a balance of $89,681,000 available to allocate to other projects. The next account is a small balance. That's a balance left from an archaeological reconnaissance survey grant. And this is, goes back to early on when we purchased the Samuel Smith House. These are grants that we were getting to do some, I think, archaeological surveying of the property. Okay, then the, the next series of accounts are related to the Board of Education. So we have Eastline Pool Roof Reserve. I believe, going back historically, these are funds that we received from, as an insurance settlement with issues concerning the, the construction of the roof on that building. I did receive an email from Mr. Lund the other day. He's looking to come and ask for between $5,000 and $10,000 to be appropriated from that. I guess they're looking to do some kind of a study to see what work needs to be done on that roof. The Learn Reserve, we have a balance of a little over $154,000. Those are fees that we previously collected at, from, for rent in the building, which right now, we're not doing anymore. And the, the one thing I do still have to find out, I need to do some more research on the Lilly B. Haines projects. I was not able to determine the source of, of those funds. And then the Eastline High School Turf Replacement, these are funds that I know that the Board of Ed provided us with $25,000 that they had sitting in an account on their side to put in this fund. And then I believe the $14,457 came from maybe some of the, we, some of the Lilly B. Haines rental funds that we had previously appropriated. When we cleaned the funds, we put them in, in this account. And then the last two items, the Energy Savings Initiatives and the Middle School Building Envelope Study, those are two projects that we actually put in to place this fiscal year. And we, we took funds from the Lilly B. Haines rental fees to do these appropriations. And actually, the other day, Mr. Lund is getting ready to move forward on these projects. He's been going through the process of going out to bid for the vendors for those. So that's kind of like a synopsis of where the remaining funds are in the CNRE fund at this point in time. And I believe the, from the 10-year Capital Improvement Plan, the one project that we identified within the CIP to use funds that, like from the townwide account, was the Knox Box Replacement Project for the Fire Marshal. So we would be using some of those funds for that particular project.
Anna, I just have one request on this report. And perhaps you could add an extra column and call it status and identify for us maybe in the future and, and even help you keep track what's open, what's closed, what's revolving? Because it's difficult for us to be able to determine by looking at this report if the project is complete and those are funds that can be allocated elsewhere, or if there's still maybe some residual charges that will be coming through for it.
Yeah, that, that should be easy enough to do.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Anna on the CNRE Fund Report?
Just very nice job covering it. Thank you. That really helps clarify things.
Okay, so if there's no questions or further comments, I think we can move on to the last item under New Business, which is an audit update. And Anna will provide us with an audit update where we are in terms of completing the audit for June 30th, 2020.
Yeah, okay, so I, I currently have a draft. I, I received the draft on, it's around, I believe on April 7th. And, you know, I have gone through, I have reviewed it. And initially, I thought we would be completed and filed by the end of the month. However, internally, the audit firm has a review process that they go through. First, the the auditor that is the managing partner assigned to the engagement reviews it. And then it goes through another revert, another review process within the firm. And so due to that, it, it's expected that more than likely, it will end up running into the first week of May before we're actually able to, to file. We do, you know, one of the things that I believe is important to the Board of Finance is having an understanding of where our unassigned fund balance is. Because that's a key component of, you know, a part of our projected revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. And so within the audit, the unassigned fund balance is, you know, a little over $8.2 million, which, you know, that is an increase of, you know, what it has been. And it's more or less consistent with the projections that we have been looking at every month when I provide the board with the updated unassigned fund balance report. The one that you were provided with at the end of March, it did, you know, it did include that updated number. But knowing that it's important to you in, you know, your revenue projections, I thought, you know, I'd kind of go over it. You know, go over it, you know, this evening. So, you know, those are the comments that I have. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the Finance Director on the audit? Anna, when should we schedule a presentation to the Board of Finance for the audit report and findings?
Um, so
Do you think
Pardon?
Do you think June would be an appropriate time? At the June meeting?
Well, I would, I'm, I'm, what I, I think that that would make the most sense at this time because I'm sure that you'd want to have time to, you know, review it before the auditor is making the presentation to you. That way, you know, if you have questions, you have more time to, you know, think about the report and come up with any questions that you might have.
So are you suggesting a, a meeting with the Audit Subcommittee prior to them presenting to the full Board of Finance?
Um, I was actually, I was actually talking about the the Board of Finance presentation. I thought you were, you were suggesting that for, for June. If you're looking for a presentation to the Audit Committee, I would maybe try to schedule that a couple of weeks prior to the presentation to the full board.
That's what I was thinking, because this can be a rather lengthy presentation to the entire Board of Finance. So maybe it would be helpful to have the Subcommittee meet prior to, you know, prior to them presenting to the full Board of Finance. And I'm trying to remember how we, how did we do this last year? Last year was another oddity.
No, last year, the presentations were done in person, both to the Subcommittee and to the full Board of Finance, because that, that was all done pre-COVID. So they were in-person meetings.
So that was done in February of last year?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So in terms of do you want to do the presentation at your June meeting? Or would you rather, you know, look into a special meeting?
Well, if the, if the audit is going to be filed with the state the first week of May, then of course the Audit Committee can get an advanced copy of that to have a week or two to look at it. So I am thinking perhaps maybe the first week of June, setting up a meeting with the auditors to to go over the report and the findings?
So are you talking Board of Finance or Subcommittee?
First with the Subcommittee, which is really just you, I, and Rich. So however, we did it last year. We got together, we sat down at a conference table and we walked through the numbers and we asked our questions as a Subcommittee first, prior to having that report presented to the entire Board of Finance. So if we meet with the Subcommittee and the auditors the first week of June, or try to do that, and then have them come before the Board of Finance at the regularly, like a week later at the regularly scheduled meeting?
I mean, you may want to just look at what your agenda is in June. I, I can't anticipate what it would be. Obviously, if it's lengthy, you might want to do a special meeting. Maybe when we get a little closer, we can ink it in, but we should pencil it in now. I think those are good suggestions. And we'll try to keep your, your business light on whatever I can do to make your business.
Yeah, so the one thing in June that, that we typically do are all of the special appropriations. A couple of them that are really critical. Last year, we couldn't get the acquisition plan done fast enough for the Board of Ed, because they, you know, it was really critical that it was really critical that they get the one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of equipment as quickly as possible, so that they could get them to the students. This year, they do have about a half a million dollars in the plan. I'm not sure how critical it's going to be this year. But I, I also know that they like to place the order so that they can get the equipment while school is out in the summer. And then in terms of the bonding resolutions, from looking at the Capital Improvement Plan, there were only two items. The nyanic fire apparatus and the road, the road, the road projects. The timing for those is tied to the month of August, which is when we do our annual financing. So those are the three items that like we would really have to deal with. The others, we could, you know, possibly put off until July.
Okay, let's just try to get the Subcommittee meeting scheduled sometime in June. I mean, not that you have to schedule this meeting tomorrow, because we still don't know if it's actually going to be filed the first week of May. But on your radar and on your calendar, just try to get us in with the auditors, the Subcommittee, Rich and myself and you. The first week, or assume thereafter as it's available. If there's something pressing on it that I think needs to be brought to the attention of the entire board, we can do it in June. If not, you know, we'll postpone it till July sometime. You know, if, if, in other words, I think if it's critical enough to have a special meeting, we can. If not, we can plan on
Because I just, and, and the other thing too is, is I'd like to, if, if we had dates for the Board of Finance, I would like to have the auditor, you know, put them in on their schedule as well, so that, you know, they're available on the days that we would like for them to come.
Okay, all right, I'll get with Rich tomorrow and the next couple of days, and we'll come up with some days that might work for us. Yep. Okay, thanks, all right. I, I did have one question, Anna, just for clarification on the revenues, I'm sorry to circle back that far, but I I was saving it towards the end, and then as you went through all the revenue items, I just forgot. But in terms of the property tax bills that went out in January for the January collection, there was an extension of time that people could pay that bill for another ninety days, correct?
Right, those, those were due on April first.
Right, so we're not, so we know that if the property tax bill is due on January first, it can be paid up until the last day of January without any sort of penalty. So if the new date is April first, the amount of money that you were talking about in the shortfall of collections could easily, we could easily get a lot more than the historical numbers suggested, just based on that fact alone, correct?
Well, I mean, actually
I mean, I guess we could see a rush in the last week or so of April.
So, so actually, if, for the, like, the ninety-day collection period that, that we had this year, if you didn't pay your taxes on or before April first, come April second, you had to pay all the interest that was due back to January, like that, it just ended.
So there was no grace period?
No, the, the grace period was really January first to April first. But once you hit April first, but once you hit April second, the first minute of the day, you go all the way back to January, start paying interest.
Okay, so that Yeah, okay, yeah, so I guess that is a little concerning than the the degree to which we have not collected.
Well, but, but that said, I'm getting calls all day long, and got one today about people didn't know that. The, the nuance that you just, that we just explained, and you didn't understand, well, you didn't know. So a lot of people are paying, thinking they have until April thirty. They are also finding out they owe an extra two hundred dollars in interest and penalties. There's no way we can wait that, it's a state thing. I do think we're going to pick up some revenue, some tax collections in the next thirteen days.
Well, I mean, even what we've collected month to date, that's a historic, I mean, that's a historically high number. We, we don't typically collect that, you know, the amount that we've collected so far month to date in the month of April. So that's, you know, that's somewhat promising for us. Before the meeting, you know, before our meetings on Wednesday and Thursday, I'll, you know, I'll bring, I'll bring updates for you then as well. And we'll see how it's going. And then, you know, in speaking with the, the staff in the Tax Collector's Office, when they sent out the notices to lean to the real estate individuals, the ones that know that the interest remain, that really focus on the interest remaining the same through the end of the month, they're the ones that are, you know, there is a certain number that will wait until the very end of the month to come in.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, to be revisited on Wednesday then. All right, I think that concludes our items on the agenda. So let's move on to Board comments. If there's anybody that would like to make a comment, or if there's a question about what we're going to do on Wednesday. Yes, John?
Exactly, what you just said, do you have any specific format for Wednesday?
So I think we might handle it a little bit differently than last year. I'd like to open it up again with a discussion of the revenues. And then I would like to open it up to a discussion of the operating budget for both the Board of Ed and the town. Last year, if you recall, we settled on a final budget for the Board of Ed first. And once we finalized that, we've done to the general government town budget. I think that what I would like to do, Anne Chikela and I had talked about this, we'd like to keep it open on both ends, because there might be some final adjustments. So if you go back and you crunch your numbers and you say, gee, I'd really like to hold the mill rate increase to, you know, point one five, how do we get there? If we lock into one side of the budget, we won't be able to go back and adjust that if we can't make up for that on the other side of the budget. If that's in fact where the consensus is, where we need to be. So what I will do is I will call on each of you to give a statement. What do you think the condition of the economy yet, of the economy is? How do you think our residents and taxpayers are faring in this economy? What are your concerns? Do you want to support the budget as submitted? Or would you like to see some further reductions in, in the increased budget? Give, give me, give us, you know, share with us, the rest of us, your opinion? And and then after we've all had an opportunity to speak and maybe throw out some numbers, then I'll entertain, if we get to that point, a motion for both the Board of Ed and the town side at once. Clear as mud?
We're gonna try to clear up everything this first day. You have a second date on there too.
Well, I'd love, I would love it if we could get through deliberations on Wednesday and come up with a finalized budget on Wednesday.
So, so it might, it might go into the second day if you can all agree.
This is true, that's what Thursday's meeting is for. If we don't, if we don't finish and we can't come to some kind of consensus, and it's getting to be, I don't know, eleven o'clock or so, you know, what, when are we starting, six-thirty, I think, on Wednesday? So if it's getting late and we're running around in circles, we might just call for a break and continue deliberations on Thursday.
Camille, just a thought, I, I took a look at that, at the agenda for the Wednesday meeting, and it mentions review of town budget, doesn't mention review of Board of Education.
Yeah, so the town budget is really both. You know, when you look at the components of the town budget, right, it's the general government side and it's the Board of Ed side. But altogether, it's really the town budget.
Right, right, I, I just, just for clarification sake for us, yeah, just to know that we're, we're planning to discuss the entire budget with its two sides on, on, you know, on Wednesday, okay? And I, and I'm not sure about, maybe some dates might need to be revised on that too. I mean, the, the budget, the year of the budget might not, I mean, may not
Yes, Anna caught that, Mr., Anna caught that today. I, I had submitted those, that verbiage to her and neglected to change the years. Anna caught that, so she's gonna file an amended agenda.
Okay. Okay, so it's, okay, just, yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of any, I don't think we have much of the public effort tuning into our deliberations, but just want to make the, the, yeah, agenda clear. Yeah, thanks.
Anna, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so since I have to file an amended, amended agenda, do you want me to, you know, you know, make it town and Board of Ed budget deliberations in that line, or just leave it as it is?
You could put parentheses, G G, and B O E, just to make it clear, that, that would be fine.
Just keep in mind, I, I won't be there, because there's a Board of Selectmen meeting, that's our regular meeting date. Anna, I don't know how you're gonna do both, I guess you'll be jumping back and forth. We have a few financial items on the Board of Selectmen agenda, but I'm sure you'll be able to jump back out. I'll try to put you up front and adjust things, but
What time is, what time is your meeting, Mark, is it usually seven?
Seven, because we have a special meeting first, and then our, then it will roll into the regular meeting when we're ready. So we have three guest speakers. Plus a full agenda. But we'll, we'll get there, if you get a little bit more of the Board of Ed stuff down, obviously, I, you know, can listen and be part of your solution, I guess. I'll join in afterwards if I can.
Okay.
Any, any other questions on, on what we're doing on Wednesday, possibly Thursday?
I just was wondering, Camille, at one point, Jeff Newton, Superintendent Newton, had said that maybe more information was coming to us, other than what Amy provided. So is there anything else coming our way from them, from that, from the Board of Ed?
Well, I had, I just have one outstanding question. I, I emailed Amy separately, just a one-on-one communication with her, because I had a quick question on the presentation that she had sent to us. And, and I, as of six-thirty tonight, I hadn't seen a response, but I don't know if there was anything else that you were expecting that
You know, I do, I think, I think one of my questions when they were presenting, and when we were asking for additional information, was the comparison amongst the DURG, you know, the, the East Line, was, I think the issue was the math coach or coaches. And then I, I asked, okay, so how do we compare in terms of solution to that problem, if it exists with our comparable communities? The DURG, being the DURG, you know, that, by school districts that are comparable. And have they had that, that issue and how they solved it? So I'm not sure that's come forth.
I haven't seen anything to reflect. Can, can you email Amy Drown tomorrow and follow up?
Yes.
And if you get a response, you can share that with us on Wednesday?
Sounds good, okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Okay, and I think all the information that we had asked of the Police Department came forward. I don't know if everybody had a chance to review that. Is there any other outstanding items that you think that we need from the police? That was a big discussion that we had. Any, any information missing that we asked for from another department that anybody's anticipating? Yes, Anne?
I was just trying to get a list from the Board of Ed of which, I was just a little confused, which positions that they wanted to hire were full-time or part-time, or whether there was going to be a year or, you know, permanent with, you know, going on for years and years. So I was waiting to get that from Amy Drown or her secretary, I'm, I'm still waiting for that. If I do get it, I will pass it on.
Oh, that's great, Anne, thanks. So you emailed separately too as a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay, so whatever responses we get to these individual questions that we had, we will share on Wednesday evening, if they've become available. All right. Any other comments or questions or concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Anne Chikela, was there a second? Thanks, John, okay, all those in favor say aye. Great, thanks, everybody, we'll see you Wednesday.